Good evening and welcome to the January twenty fifth, E twenty three meeting of the Santa Monica Planning Commission. And we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Fondre Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert is absent. Commissioner Landris?
Here.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Here.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Here.
And Chair Reese is absent as well.
Perfect. Before we proceed to the planning director's report, there's a matter of agenda management. We've received a request, the applicant team for item six A on the agenda tonight, which involves an application for a conditional use permit for three zero one six Main Street to complete this item. Commissioners, it's up to our discretion whether to grant that. And before we entertain motions to potentially continue this, I did want to check in with our chief deputy city attorney to see if we should have public comment for this before proceeding further.
If you determine to continue the matter, you would not need to take public comment. So you, it's just a matter of at this moment, whether or not you'd like to continue the item.
Got it. Is anybody inclined to make a motion to continue this? See Commissioner Fondre Bernardi raising his hand?
I'll second.
I will move to continue this to our next meeting or whenever the applicant would want to. I'll just say to our next meeting, let's put it that way.
I think we'll suggest, I think we'll suggest February the fifteenth, actually.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep, I'll second.
All right, moved by Commissioner Fondre Bernardi, seconded by Commissioner Landris. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Fondre Bernardi?
Here, yes, sorry.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes. So that matter is February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you to all the members of the applicant team for coming out tonight. And with that, we'll move on to the planning director's report. Good evening, Commissioner. Waiting for the, there's the slide, great. So coming up at your next meeting, which is February first, a week from tonight, will be your final recommendation to City Council on the housing application. February fifteenth, we have scheduled six thirty-eight Eleventh Street Fence Wall Hedge Modification Appeal. And then seventeen twenty-seven Ocean Park Boulevard, which is an early childhood education facility expansion. And it sounds like we'll be hearing the Main Street project that night as well. And then March first, an amendment to the alcohol CUP for the Georgian Hotel. And then also that night, the commission will review a new development project hotel at five sixteen Colorado Avenue. City Council Action, so last night, the council endorsed a public process to determine the future of Santa Monica Airport. This was strictly limited to the process. It obviously wasn't about what the future of the airport was. It's really just a process as the city used to gather input and make that decision at some point down the road. And then upcoming city council items on February fourteenth, there'll be a housing element study session, another one on February twenty-second. And then February twenty-eighth, we have some little room reserved on that meeting in case the housing element study sessions spill over into the next meeting. If the council needs more time, they could also take that up on the twenty-eighth. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions. Great. Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Landris?
Yeah, just for clarity, is seventeen twenty-seven Ocean Park the first school or that co-working place?
I think, is that the big and tiny thing?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Yes.
It's big and tiny. It's not the first school.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And Commissioner Fresco?
Um, I just wanted to ask staff if our letter to City Council had been forwarded yet?
Yes.
I think I saw it go, but Jane, can you confirm?
Yeah, it was like Monday, I think. Jim Doc he signed it and, you know, we got, got it to the council.
Well, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right, seeing done, we're going to move on to the announcement portion of our agenda tonight. Before I turn to my colleagues, I'd like to let the public know the following. Please note tonight's procedures for public comments. We are accepting real-time oral public comment by phone for each item. Please check the top of the posted agenda for the phone number to call once the caller queue for each item opens. The caller queue will open when each item is introduced and will close after the first five public comments are heard. Written, comments received up until noon today have been read by the commission. Comments received after twelve noon today will be considered as part of the record of proceedings, but may not be posted online with the planning commission's agenda prior to the meeting. I also have an announcement related to the moderator chat functions. Moderator chat blue jeans is for technical help from administrative staff only. It is not for public comments. The commission cannot see the chat and comments will not be forwarded to the commission or entered into the record. That being said, do any commissioners have any announcements tonight? Seeing done, I'll just let you all know that unfortunately, I likely will not be joining you at next Wednesday's meeting on the first. I'm doing everything I can to see if I can join you, but there's a very, very high likelihood that unfortunately I won't be there next week. Great. All right, any other, any other announcements? Seeing done, uh, we, Commissioner Landris, yeah.
I just want to encourage, I mean, you've, you were there last week, so I just want to encourage you to, if, you know, if you can't participate in the meeting, to make sure to communicate any follow-ups you have in writing a grounded, compliant way. And also to, you know, if you feel you can, to find a way to participate in the vote. I mean, you've been at this with, you've been at this for quite some time, so.
Absolutely. I appreciate it. I'm, I'm working on it and we'll see if I'll be there next week.
Okay.
All right, so any other announcements? I've got nothing on the consent calendar, no study session, no continued items, no staff administrative items. Item six A has been continued to our February fifteenth meeting, which brings us to six B. Recommendation to the City Council on amendments to the zoning ordinance related to private property, outdoor space program, and economic and emergency response. I believe that our first step is to move into the staff presentation.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Steve Muzakami and Carrie Fukui here from City Planning. Good for the presentation to fire up. Thank you, Carrie. So the next item on the agenda is the establishment of an outdoor space program on private property as well as other zoning amendments as part of the city's ongoing economic recovery efforts following the pandemic. Next slide. So as we know, the city established the temporary outdoor use program for businesses soon after the start of the pandemic back in May twenty twenty. Under this initial program, businesses are granted permits to use sidewalks, on-street parking spaces for parklets, portions of the Santa Monica Pier and their street promenade, as well as outdoor space on private property for commercial activities. The program has supported a variety of businesses, including restaurants, fitness and training, personal services and retail on both public areas and also within onsite surface parking lots or open space on private sites. The outdoor space program is grouped together with other recovery provisions under IZO that is set to expire on June thirtieth of this year. In addition to this new program, staff proposes to also codify the two-year permit timeframe extension provided during the pandemic that recently expired at the end of last year. That would essentially memorialize the timeframes into the code for future reference. Next slide. So the current temporary program has been critical in supporting businesses during the pandemic. And its overall success has provided a new perspective on the city's approach to the commercial use of outdoor space moving forward. This opportunity to use outdoor space on private property serves many of our businesses that are not eligible to have a parklet in front of their own business, particularly on commercial streets with higher traffic speeds such as Pico and most of the Bullard. Currently, we have about ninety-four permits issued under the program, primarily used for outdoor dining. Permanent program would allow existing businesses to renew their permits to retain their existing outdoor spaces as permitted under the temporary program. And these businesses would not be subject to the new proposed program standards and requirements. The new program does, continues to provide flexibility to new applicants, but does include a few additional size and operational requirements to ensure that new outdoor spaces are compatible with its surroundings. And we'll go over the changes to the program later on, but first, Carrie will be going over the business outreach, site survey and coordination efforts that helped inform the basic, the basic framework of this program.
Great, thank you, Steve. So to get an idea of how the temporary program is currently being used and what really remains thereafter the program can go close, given the lifted pandemic restrictions, staff went out on a site visit to all ninety-four of the current temporary outdoor permit holders. And we really assessed, you know, what types of uses are still operating, what do these spaces look like and where are they located? So to give you an idea of how the temporary program works, you can see a variety of different uses and different types of investment that were made into these temporary spaces. Here at eighteen fourteen Berkeley, you can see more of a simple, just tables outside for a restaurant placed on private property, not in a parking lot, more just in between two commercial tenants. And then at twelve ten Montana, you can see quite a bit more investment was put into what looks like a salon use here in a back parking lot. And similarly, at twenty-nine oh-one Pico, outdoor dining area with more temporary uses right adjacent to a parking lot, where you can see they still provided access to ADA parking spaces. And a couple more examples here, you can see this is Lunetta at twenty-four twenty Pico Boulevard. Where here, they're located across an alley, where if you read through the ordinance, you'll see that there will be additional restrictions on locational requirements. But as Steve said, the current operators, if applied for within the timeframe before the permanent program, will be able to maintain their existing conditions and existing outdoor spaces. That's similar to former restaurant here at sixteen ten Montana, where you can see the outdoor space is in a parking lot adjacent to a residential area, given the outreach that we did with city divisions and through our survey. And just kind of considering the impacts that these outdoor spaces could have on adjacent residential areas, we would then really try to establish these spaces on the parking area adjacent to the commercial building rather than adjacent to the residential, just to reduce that sort of impact of the buffer of a use next to a residential area. And additionally, to get a better sense of the current operations of the temporary program and to help us identify how this benefited businesses, what they wanted to see in the program, this really helped us to inform the standards of the new ordinance. So we asked them, we sent this survey out to all ninety-four temporary outdoor permit holders. We got a response from about twenty-four of the permit holders. And we asked questions like, you know, how is your space used? How often are you using it? And you can see, as expected, most of these outdoor spaces are used for more restaurant food service industries. There were some responses for fitness, personal care services like salons, and then one bar that's in operation. And you can see that these spaces are still being used pretty regularly with all of them at least once a week and a majority of them every day. We also asked what size of the space they have, just to get an idea of how big we should limit these spaces to be, you know, how much space they would need to have it be a functional outdoor space. A majority of them are all about a thousand square feet or greater. And we also asked what other amenities they'd be interested in, with a lot saying, you know, planter boxes, help beautify the spaces, more alternative temporary floor coverings, maybe to make it easier to install these outdoor spaces. And also permanent shade structures were another one that a lot of people requested. And in the end, you know, we asked an open-ended comment just to see what people really thought about this, if they had any feedback. And we wanted to note that it was predominantly, pretty much all good responses. All these businesses really saw a lot of value in this program. They said it helped them survive the pandemic. They still see the value in this and helping them stay afloat for these small businesses. They saw it as a better use than off-street parking and that they still get requests and demands from a lot of customers that are coming in to sit in the outside space. So, you know, it's generally been a very positive program for the business community. And also to get an idea of, you know, we asked what their existing size was. We also asked what size it would like to see this permanent program to be and how much they would be allowed to have. So we did a bit of a comparison to see on the left side, this is how big and how many parking spaces those respondents have. And then also on the right, what they would desire to see in the permanent program. I created a little symbol here, legend, that shows most of them are happy with the size that they requested and currently have. With a handful interested in slightly bigger sizes and just one of them, that would be okay with something small. So, you know, this kind of really helped us get an idea of what's the appropriate size for the permanent program. And furthermore, to get a better understanding of any complications that the city faced during this temporary program, whether that be through complaints or operations for mobility, circulation, RRR, trash recovery. We coordinated with different city divisions here, building and safety, mobility, RRR, and economic development. Just to see how the permanent program can alleviate any issues that they faced, just to raise any concerns to us and to help us really develop out the process that we'll be putting in place to review these permanent program applications. So to start, we met with building and safety, largely their involvement in the process, they requested to remain the same, where they would review plans against the building code for all of these outdoor spaces. They'll issue permits for any structural or electrical work that'll be done. And we want to note after this conversation, you know, we really parsed out what the different thresholds for building permits would be and based off that, the ease of implementing these outdoor spaces for small businesses. So the standards that we developed are really reflective of the minimum requirements for building and safety. ADA access barriers, building permits. And we explore that more in the administrative regulations, where we'll provide businesses with options where we can say, you know, if you want an easier building permit review, less cost, less time, you know, these are the kind of standards and things that you could put in place versus if you're looking more for permanent structures, permanent overhead coverings. We'll give them an idea of what that permit threshold would kick them into and what timeframe that could cause or how much cost that would cost for them. Additionally, we met with mobility. They had no explicit issues or complaints received related to parking, circulation or loading with the temporary program. We took a lot of their feedback to help inform the ordinance and admin regulations based off any expected concerns or really a lot of safety issues that they could see with permanent outdoor space in a parking area. So one thing was that they would like to see a parking loading operations plan for any outdoor space that might have an impact on a loading area. They also are wary of having an outdoor space where customers and staff would have to cross an alley or public right-of-way. So that would be subject to the review of mobility, where they could maybe state additional safety requirements to make that safe for customers. They also would want to prohibit blocking or removal of any curb cuts that are used to access active parking areas, active loading areas, active ADA spaces. But then if there is a curb cut that's being blocked by an outdoor space that's no longer needed, say they have an extra curb cut that they can use to access parking, they can put outdoor space by the second curb cut that they would require them to close if it's not, no longer being used. Further, we met with RRR, Resource Recovery and Recycling. They also had no explicit issues or complaints with the temporary program. They would just request to stay involved with the review of all of these plans just to ensure that they can continue their operations and that they're not impacted by the location of proposed outdoor space. Also, we met with economic development. Initially, there was interest from fitness operators during the temporary program to operate and open up a fitness studio that would solely be based on an underutilized surface parking lot that would be related to a commercial use, but without them actually having a tenant space in that associated commercial building. So this use wouldn't be associated with an existing use on the site, but staff does not recommend moving forward with this at the time with this current permanent program in front of you. For a couple reasons, there hasn't been any really recent interest in these fitness operators, the ones that had raised this initially, no longer were coming back about this. Economic development hadn't heard of any other interest from other fitness operators. So we think just with the lifted regulations from COVID, that there's just not the demand that there used to be during the temporary program. We're also thinking of the noise impacts that this might have where a hundred percent of a business is operating outside. And also that it would create some sort of unfair advantage for businesses that are required to operate out of a commercial tenant space, you know, pay for a lease and upkeep of facilities to have a business that doesn't have to do any of that and can just rent out a flat surface lot for a hundred percent of their operation. And with that, Steve will go into how all of that really helped to inform the permanent program that we have in place today.
Thanks, Carrie. So the, the temporary program requirements during the COVID period were based primarily to address fire, life and safety issues, consistent with the evolving county health and safety requirements. Therefore, the typical zoning standards, including what we're used to, such as allowable size, location, parking requirements and operating hours were not required at that time. The permanent program maintains the similar approach in maintaining flexibility, although does include a few standards intended to ensure that new outdoor spaces moving forward are not disruptive to surrounding uses. So we'll quickly go over these changes, starting with permitted uses. Next slide. In terms of permitted uses, which will remain generally the same, however, animal care, sales and services have been added as an ineligible use, and this is due to the potential noise impacts that may result with animals being outdoors. Another clarification is that outdoor spaces may be located on commercial parking lots that are supporting the subject business, whether they are zoned for commercial or if the underlying zone is technically residential. Next slide. So outdoor spaces would continue to be exempt from floor area ratio and parking requirements. The change here is that they will also be exempt as floor area and as such would not be considered expansions in area for non-conforming uses. This would essentially allow non-conforming uses to participate, except those that are specifically prohibited by the program. Next slide. Size and parking, so each business would be allowed up to about a thousand square feet of outdoor space. However, no greater than fifty percent of the existing onsite parking may be converted. Now, this is intended to help try to balance the existing parking overall circulation of these parking lots, including kind of our loading operations and any access to any refuse enclosures on site. Another provision is when located in a parking lot, a business would be allowed only a single area opposed to having multiple separate areas spread throughout the parking lot. And we've also cross-referenced an existing section in the parking code where additional parking may be removed beyond this fifty percent if it can be demonstrated that parking demand can be accommodated. Next slide. As we know, AV twenty ninety-seven eliminates minimum parking requirements for commercial uses within a half mile of a major transit stop, which includes a majority of the commercial boulevards. Consistent with this direction, no additional parking would be required for the new open outdoor spaces and also the further removal of the existing parking up to that fifty percent would be allowed. Also, we'd like to note that staff has not received any parking concerns or issues, as Carrie had mentioned, due to the temporary program or during the temporary program and the pandemic. And so requiring additional parking seems to be an appropriate move here. Next step, thanks, Nick. And here is kind of the familiar napping that we're used to. Next slide. Locations, so the change here is that we are recommending a fifteen-foot setback from abutting residential uses. This is to ensure that there is some separation from new outdoor spaces from residential. And as a part of the application review process, staff will be ensuring that there's adequate overall circulation and safety in place for proposals within any of our parking lots. Next slide. Decks, canopies, structures, heaters and ADA. Existing permit hole, permit thresholds and including ADA access requirements will remain unchanged. The change here is that we are recommending that the temporary pop-up tents and canopies not be allowed as a business's permanent fixture. As we do want to encourage businesses to improve their spaces with permanent materials. The temporary use of tents and canopies during the winter season would be fine as, as on a temporary basis and of course would require fire permits to do so. But structures with permanent footings would be the preferred route opposed to having these temporary tents and that is from a building code standpoint. Next slide. Noise and hours of operation. The change here is establishing operating hours for restaurants and fitness and training. And also clarifying that televisions and similar screen projectors would not be allowed as forms of speaker amplification outdoors. For restaurants, it would be from eight AM to eleven PM and for fitness training from seven AM to seven PM. And these are intended to minimize noise impacts to surrounding uses, including residential. Alcohol permits, no changes are proposed. Restaurants will still be responsible to obtain all required city and ABC permits. Next slide. Administrative regulations, the program would continue to update the administrative regulations through this process, which include more of the technical building and fire requirements, mobility clearances, design standards for shading devices, lighting fixtures, furniture and signage. And this would allow for some added flexibility to help applicants achieve their outdoor space by working with staff during the application review process. And as part of that application review, will be ensuring adequate overall circulation and safety within the parking lots. Next slide. For the Santa Monica Pier, we will continue to have the same flexibility and would here would be exempt from new size, location, hours and parking space conversion requirements that are part of the new program, and that's just due to the uniqueness of the pier. Next slide. Existing non-conforming uses, the program would allow non-conforming commercial uses to utilize outdoor space, of course, except those that are specifically prohibited by the program. As this outdoor space would not be considered as an expansion of a non-conforming use, whether it's a prohibited use in the district or a non-conforming use due to the lack of a planning entitlement. Next slide. But for the renewal process, existing businesses will be able to retain their permitted outdoor space by renewing their permits by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-three. The process would include the submittal of an application with drawings and plans that reflect their approved outdoor space. Under the temporary program. The city would ensure that the proper building and fire permits have been obtained by the business as required under the temporary program. Renewal permits would not be subject to the new program standards or requirements that we're going through currently right now. However, those seeking to expand their outdoor space would require a new permit at that point. And then they would then be subject to the new requirements. And we believe this would allow for sufficient time for businesses to prepare their plans for the submittal. Next slide. The zoning ordinance would be amended to include a new section titled Outdoor Commercial Uses on Private. Property under chapter nine point three one. You do see a red line strikeout of the point one nine five. Which is actually currently taken by a future housing element program. So for this program, we will need to take the one nine nine. So that's just the deadline correction. And then also staff also has a few corrections to the definitions and permitted uses language, the section. Of the this part of the ordinance, which has to do with the oceanfront district along Ocean Avenue. That is actually a residential district in the code. And so therefore, these changes are recommended so that we don't. Unintentionally preclude any existing commercial uses in this area and this district from the program. And it's intended that these properties also have the ability to get outdoor space. Next slide also includes some revised language reflecting that change. Next slide. So the following sections would be amended to provide consistency with the program allowances, including floor area, floor area ratio. Parking requirements, the legal non-conforming uses section. And also the existing outdoor dining and seating section, which is specifically for side block dining on the public right of way. So that is a different. Part of the program is not included in this part. Next slide. So for other changes, staff recommends allowing the other provisions of ISO twenty seven twenty four to. Expire as they are not as necessary at this time as we transition out of the pandemic. And staff recommends codifying, again codifying the two-year permit timeframe extension, which. Also allows a time extension to be requested at any time prior to thirty days of permit expiring. And staff does have some corrective language we'd like to share that would capture. Next slide. Essentially would capture instances where additional time that was granted for projects by the commission. Which would be different from what the code allows for, which is generally two years. So if a permit. Was authorized, a greater amount of time than the two, then the additional two would be on top of that approved timeframe that was given. Next slide. So in this discussion, the commission should focus on whether the program provides adequate flexibility in supporting. Of business retention and new businesses. Whether the proposed program standards are adequate and ensuring neighborhood compatibility. And any other recommendations to the program for staff's consideration. Next slide. So staff recommends that the commission recommend council adoption of the proposed outdoor space program. As well as the related zoning amendments, including memorializing the two-year. And that completes the staff report and both Kerry and myself are available for any questions.
Great. Thank you for the fantastic presentation. I'll. Turn to my colleagues in in one moment for questions, but I should announce that the caller queue where this item is open. Yeah, I just have to read a quick little blurb. Anyone wishing to provide oral public comment to this item, they call now. Once you're in the queue, you will hear the meeting over the phone. And when it's time for public comments and it is your turn to speak. We notify that you're being unmuted by the moderator and we'll turn to public comment after we have commissioner questions. I think the first person I saw was Commissioner Fresco, so I'll turn to Commissioner Fresco first.
Thank you for the report and I think this is a really cool provision that we're. Banking for. I wanted to know if there was a reason. You picked a thousand square feet across the board, even in cases where they weren't removing parking. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is private. For, I wanted to know if there was a reason. You picked a thousand square feet across the board, even in cases where they weren't removing parking. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is private.
And the parking lots. And so. The program would allow for a combination of a thousand square feet. But I guess the, based on the the areas that we were seeing. Most of them were actually in the parking lot. So that kind of. Gave us an idea that most of these areas were going to be kind of a part of those areas. And then also the thought of. Program could support multiple tenants as well. So there could be multiple businesses within a multi-tenant property. And so. A thousand square feet, again, in total, was something of the balance that we are seeing based on kind of the survey. It seemed like it was maybe about balancing right in the middle of what we're seeing in terms of. Either existing square footages from businesses or what they would prefer. And so I think in a, maybe in a worst case scenario, you're thinking about multiple businesses that. Might look to have some outdoor space in parking lots. And so maybe a thousand square feet per business, you can kind of see maybe. Or if there's a larger parking lot that could start to add up fairly quickly. But even in our site visits, we also did notice that there weren't a lot of. Instances where there were kind of the multiple businesses on one property. So. Not to say that it couldn't happen, but that's also just some feedback and some things that we had kind of noticed. But. Of course, the program has the plan for kind of a wide variety of different cases. So I think that's. Kind of where we landed in terms of the balance.
Is there any provision or option to. Have a more discretionary review if there is some unforeseen. Site where there's more space and nobody can share it?
Yeah, I mean, there. It could be a situation where, let's say, if a property has a lot of other common outdoor spaces that. It might be a little bit more unique with those properties, but. If there is a property that had a lot of open space that was not in the parking lot, could they maybe have a little bit more? Maybe that's something that you may want to, you could kind of think about and see if there's any flexibility. Those situations.
My question was, is there an option for a variance? Can they just even now? You know, this is all administrative process, but if they wanted to go beyond it, could they come to us? In a case-by-case basis, considering this would be a really rare occurrence.
There is one provision where, let's say here, well, I guess the maximum size would be one thousand square feet. We also have that provision that doesn't allow for more than fifty percent of the existing parking spaces to be converted.
This is a yes or no. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh.
Can we get a variance? It's a yes or no question. I'm trying to understand.
Not, not, not currently as it's drafted.
That's what I was trying to find out. Okay, so. Hold on. Oh yeah. So the other question I had has to do with one of the. Supporting provisions about floor area and. It used to say that unenclosed decks, balconies, porches, plazas and outdoor dining areas. Were excluded provided they didn't have a barrier of more than forty-two inches. And then you also added this provision. I'm wondering why you deleted that forty-two inch barrier. Thing because I think that would still be important with open space because the idea is not to enclose these spaces, but just to activate them. So why was that deleted?
I think the the provision that you're talking about has. It's, it's actually connected to the outdoor use along the sidewalks. And also areas that were either adjacent to the sidewalk that's on private property but is facing. That. So for that program, I believe that's still in place. I think for the private outdoor areas. That we're probably going to see more generally behind the building. It probably wasn't as important to have that, but. I think in the administrative guidelines, that's where we could start to kind of get into a little bit more of the details of like forty-two inches and railing. Something like you said, we probably don't want full enclosures necessarily, but. Yeah, there's, there is some ability to have some activation as some, you know, a lot of these are going to be in the back, but they are going to be visible.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but again, that wasn't my question. My question is, why did we strike? The forty-two inch barrier provision for the other unenclosed decks. That, you know, that just have to do with decks not. Being counted in floor area. When calculating floor area ratios. Why was it removed completely?
Hold on for one second. Let me see if I can get.
On page nineteen of the. Red line you gave us.
Yeah, so this is the provision that's connected to those. I see what you're saying. Yeah.
So if you just move that struck out thing before the new red language, then everything will be as before. And these spaces also wouldn't apply to floor area, which is what we want. So that's what I think it should do.
That's right. Yeah. So thanks for bringing that up. So as I'm looking at the strike through, so that would probably still want to be in place for the outdoor. Dining and seating on the sidewalks. Yeah, it was really intended to not apply to. The commercial uses on the private part, but it should still be in place for the sidewalk thing. Thanks for that clarification. I understand.
Okay, sorry. So then my final question is. These administrative regulations, do we get to see them and weigh in?
Yeah, so those are things that we're going to continue to develop. And again, these are kind of more of the more technical codes. From building and safety and whatnot. So what we try to do is. Have those that we felt are most important to kind of provide the framework be existing in the zoning code. And so as staff will develop the administrative guidelines, that'll be something that the director will be able to authorize. And so that, I guess that would be not so much a public process, but that would be establishing. Those criteria, just working with internal staff.
So, okay, well then. All right, in that case, well, then why? I didn't see anything in the actual code code that talked about transparency and openness of these spaces. And the requirement that they continue to be actually outdoors. I didn't see enough about that. So is there a reason why that's not in there or should we just discuss that when we get to our discussion?
Yeah, I think that's, I think direction in terms of how the administrative regulations are crafted. I think that's. That's definitely something that the commission can provide us with direction on. And if that is something that, you know, we want to include in that. Then you could put that in your recommendation.
Okay, and then I have. A kind of a out there idea. And, you know, you talked about. I mean, there was a fairness thing that you mentioned, but what about the idea, I'm trying to come up with a. Theme for a commercial ADU, if you will, that would benefit. Business owners. So it would be an opportunity for tenants, not property owners, but tenants. To maybe sublease a little part of it. So at a coffee shop with outdoor seating. Somebody could be selling, well, not that anyone reads paper newspapers, but just to. As a poor example, so that people could give other people opportunities for even tinier businesses. That also benefit from these outdoor spaces. And the subleasing would help these. Primary small businesses meet their commitments and so forth in this very demanding economy we're in.
But that is a different concept. So it's almost like subleasing to outside companies that may not. Necessarily have a primary space on the property, but be able to kind of jump into kind of. Outdoor spaces. Kind of similar to Kerry's point of the concept of having kind of fitness or maybe other. Businesses kind of jumping into kind of vacant areas. It's, I guess it's, like you said, it kind of went back to whether or not we want. Land uses to primarily be within outdoor spaces, whether or not they're smaller businesses or not. And in terms of, you know, if they're out there all day and that's the primary location for them. How would that start to impact kind of either existing commercial uses or even residential? So. It's, it's kind of like the, the program right now is set up where these spaces are ancillary to the primary use and. Primary use being, of course, within a fully enclosed building.
Okay, well, I'll discuss that with my colleagues when we get to that. Thank you very much for being patient with all my questions.
I saw commissioners Landers and Fund of Minority had their hands up. I wasn't really sure who went first. I'm going to arbitrarily choose Commissioner Landers to go next.
Okay, I'll try to keep this short because Commissioner Fresco asked a lot of my questions. So. Let me start with the question of the permit extensions. And the way that you've dealt with those. You brought up. I want to make sure that those, and I don't know if we're going to get public comment. We received a letter about those permit extensions. So I'm assuming. You know, I want to ask if you've, if you've been in communication with that, that letter author. And then you, you referenced, you referenced the. In the, in the outdoor space, it occurred to me the other week, we actually had a case. Where we were, where we heard an alcohol permit and we were concerned that the way that the permit was structured. Could inadvertently exclude them from future outdoor. Outdoor uses in the event of another pandemic or another public health emergency. And we explicitly said they couldn't work outside except for. You know, unless there were a public health emergency. How will this program? Interact with existing CUPs that regulate outdoor space usage?
Right? Yeah, that's a good question. So as we are reviewing applications that are coming in. We do have kind of all the records in terms of the applicants. And so. Based on just our review of the establishment being, and that was for kind of the bar use on Wilshire that you're referring to. And they have an alcohol CUP, so we would, as part of that, we would be looking at their, just their alcohol provision. So whether or not they have a CUP. Or an alcohol exemption. And through that, we would be looking for the conditions to see if there are any. Anything that in terms of conflict. So in terms of that, their land use entitlement would prevail. That would be. Take over and basically not allow them to be eligible for any outdoor space in this, in this instance.
In this instance, and is there, have you heard from? Anyone who was permitted in under the emergency that would lose that right? that would lose that right because of their CUP?
Uh, we haven't heard of any. Um, and so I think once the applications do start coming in, uh, we'll start to kind of better be able to, uh, provide that analysis. Um, at the time of COVID, a lot of, uh, the permits were coming in and we were just trying to get them out and up and running, um, at any rate, yeah.
And is there a pathway, and is there a pathway to resolve potential conflicts if, you know, we're looking at old CUPs that don't, didn't anticipate public health emergencies or didn't anticipate this program?
Well, I think the, uh, the question, I mean, the condition might be a little bit more unique. So I'm not quite sure how many times we are going to see something that would restrict, uh, like a CUP that, uh, would restrict, uh, any ability to be on the outside. But, um, in terms of that, that would be, we would look to the CUP in terms of, um, seeing what could be done as a modification to that. Um, and so there are certain conditions that are in place for the CUP to allow for some minor amendments. Um, but if, if something is in contrary, then perhaps maybe it would be, um, a part of, um, any modification that they might have to see.
And then let's imagine a CUP with no restrictions on outdoor use, where the CUP allows out, you know, service until, I'm going to make this up, one AM, but you now have outdoor that goes till eleven PM. What governs? The eleven PM or the one, uh, what governs outside? The eleven PM or the one AM?
Uh, if it's, if it's, uh, part of the CUP, um, conditions that allow for, well, I think the, the outdoor space that would have been approved for any CUP would be specific to certain footprint.
Right, but I'm saying imagine a CUP pre-COVID that didn't think about the idea that they'd be using their parking lot outside. It just says you can serve alcohol until one AM, right? It doesn't say inside. It says you can serve alcohol until one AM. Now we have the, the eleven PM rule. Um, which rule, what, who, which, which timeframe wins?
Yeah, I think in that case, it would be the, uh, the program, uh, if they would, um, so it's the eleven PM rule. Uh, that's part of the, um.
Okay, so they would essentially stop serving outside at eleven PM, continue to serve inside for another two hours and then go.
Yes.
Under that makeup, made up scenario. Okay, great.
That's right.
Um, now, when you, I'm switching topics, um, going back to this question of the fifty percent rule or the thousand square foot rule, um, and thank you for the, for the, um, the updated, for the chart that shows who wanted what, right? There was really, I think, one applicant that wanted to reduce their footprint. Most wanted to stay the same, but there were a good number that wanted to go up. Um, for anyone grandparented above a thousand, under the way you framed it, they can't expand except for that one little check-in with staff question, right? Or they just can't expand at all, under your current draft.
Uh, so this, these are existing businesses. Um, yes, essentially what will happen is, um, you know, once they get their renewal, new permit, um, anything that's, um, going to be, uh, different or even more than what the code, the new code provisions would require. So they would essentially become kind of non-conforming to those standards. Um, so, uh, they'd be able to keep those, um, and they'd be limited to any further expansion if it was above, let's say, if they have fifteen hundred square feet, um, and the program allows for a thousand, they can lock themselves into what they have, uh, but they'd be limited, um, to that fifteen hundred.
Got it. And then, um, you noted that there had been zero complaints about parking. So can you just sort of restate, given that there were no complaints about parking, what is the justification for the reduction in the parking lot?
Yeah, so, yeah, so that, what that did, uh, it, it's, it, um, gave us the impression that the businesses were not necessarily in need of their parking, um, because we didn't have any, uh, major concerns about parking from these new establishments. Um, that, that directed us to feel comfortable with not requiring any additional parking for the new outdoor spaces, but also allowed, uh, some reduction of the existing parking as well. Um, and so also the maintaining some parking spaces onsite, I think we felt, uh, uh, there probably still is a need for, um, commercial uses and some parking to be onsite. Uh, it would also allow, uh, to kind of free up, um, these accessways and be able to accommodate like loading and circulation.
Okay, and what safety measures are in place? I mean, you know, you brought up Lunetta, right? Lunetta is a great, I think Lunetta is a great example, but it's also a very unusual example because that there's very low traffic in that alley, um, and the sightlines are fantastic, right? The risk that someone could miss is, um, you know, really low, a knock on everything. Um, but I could see, and I haven't heard anything, I'm speculating, but I could see a, um, I could see a situation where fifty percent coverage of a parking lot actually feels less safe than a hundred percent coverage of a parking lot because of that circulation in the park, like people trying to get in and out off a commercial boulevard, right? You're introducing all kinds of circulation, new potential for, let's say, unplanned encounters, um, where a complete coverage of a parking lot eliminates that possibility entirely. So have you te, have you sort of stress tested this idea for safety?
Yeah, and I think the, uh, part of the review process for like our mobility staff, for example, uh, will be able to review proposals, uh, kind of within the parking lots. And so, uh, if, uh, if there are better solutions in terms of location, um, I think this, uh, would allow for our staff to kind of work with applicants, try to figure out what is the right locations. Um, but in terms of, um, um, allowing kind of a full conversion, uh, of that, I, I can kind of see your point where you're starting to limit more conflicts because there's no availability to use the, um,
Right.
uh, driveways. Um, but yeah, um, the, uh, example you would probably think of is like Santa Monica Blue Works where, uh, everything is kind of, that part of the parking lot is closed off and now it's just kind of wide open to everybody.
Right.
So, a, a, and again.
Like, sort of like Lunetta, it's a, I mean, it's a corner, it's very low, they're only two tenants, now three maybe, but one is secondary to, they added pizza to the beer, right? So.
Yeah, and I think in those situations, as we kind of also talk about the alley provision, um, and like you said, perhaps maybe that's an example where it functions a little bit more like a driveway because of the sightline visibility. So, um, a, again, that's something that, uh, our staff will be able to kind of take a look at. Maybe it's a case by case where, uh, some instances it might be okay, um, and maybe there's some other kind of built-in safety measures that can be, uh, worked around, um, to maybe allow for that consideration to jump over an alley. So, um, those are kind of the things that, um, we're looking to kind of do. And, and again, like the, um, right sizing everybody because everybody's, uh, got different needs, but then also every parking lot's a little bit different too. So, um, that allows, uh, kind of our staff to have that review.
Okay, I think, I think I'm good at this point. I, my worry, I'll just sort of say, and I'll come back to this in discussion. I think my worry is that it could unintentionally deliver a pocket veto to mobility, um, where in the absence of flexibility, both all the way up to a hundred percent and all the way down to zero, um, essentially mobility could say, oh, we're worried about safety, so sorry, no outdoor space for you. Um, and, and it's an unintended consequence that we want to avoid, um, and I'll come back to this in discussion. So, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Landers. Commissioner Fundamentari.
Yeah, first of all, uh, Steve, I want to commend you and your staff for an excellent report. Uh, you really went out and did the homework, looked at the situation, uh, and it's nice to have, uh, you know, ninety-seven examples to choose from because that tells you that you've proudly encountered the full spectrum of issues or constraints, uh, and so we're really working with a, a nice data set. Um, and, uh, and I think it's also good that we're looking at this nice data set after two years of operation. In other words, it's a mature situation. It's not the, you know, the first time it's happened. It's now we've been seeing it. We've seen how maybe a third of them have fallen away for a variety of reasons. We may not know all those reasons, but e, even what's left, two-thirds gives us a good foundation to make decisions. So I appreciate you bringing all that information for us. So my first question is a little bit tangential, but I want to ask it. Uh, can you tell us how many parklets we have? We've got sixty-odd, uh, of these open spaces and how do they interface with parklets?
Uh, let's see here, in terms of parklets, um.
Who perform in the same, similar way, but on public property?
Yeah, I, I think the numbers for parklet applications were a lot, um, higher than what we have in terms of permits, um, for private. Um, there's definitely more demand, uh, for the parklets and I think the, um, not sure what the current number is. Perhaps maybe Jane might be, uh, kind of remember where we're at, but it was, it was a few hundreds for those applications for parklets.
Okay, uh, and do, uh, just from my own information or anybody that's listening, do the parklets pay essentially a street use permit for that, the presence of that parklet? So, uh.
Yeah, that's correct. So, uh, under kind of the lease terms and agreements, because they are on the public right of way, they are leasing that space, so there is a charge for, for using that space in the street.
So in this scenario that we're developing, could a business have both a parklet on public property and a thousand square feet in the back in their parking lot or some other area? Is that, is that possible? Or would they lose, they have to choose one or the other, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Uh, yeah, if they're eligible for a parklet in the front, they can surely have that as well. This is really, uh, the program is really just a part of the private, the owned property.
And I, I make sure that, that's not excluded. So, uh, I thought the chart you had of what properties people had and how many square feet they wanted was very useful. Uh, but it seemed that there were only, I'll say, sixteen examples, whereas there were probably sixty candidates and it's for some reason how you picked the ones that you showed us. Or was that all the data you had, I guess, what I'm asking?
Uh, I believe that's the data that we had. Carrie, I think that was the full spectrum of, I guess, the responses, correct?
Right, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so that's, that's the only group we have to, to look at. Uh, and in various points along your report, you said that there were no complaints. I assume that meant, uh, about parking or noise or other complaints. But my question is, how would a complaint even reach your ears? In other words, if someone is, can't find a parking space and has to drive half a block in the neighborhood, find a parking space, that might not ever get to you in a sense. That's still kind of invisible. And, and was there, was, how, how, how do complaints about parking in this case come to you? Has, are those collected or understood or examined?
Sure, yeah. So, um, we've received, uh, in that, in that case, um, you guys are probably familiar with the Santa Monica two-one-one system. So, uh, we have received inquiries about, um, certain, um, kind of outdoor spaces, um, uh, from the public as, um, inquiries. And so that would always kind of come to the economic recovery team that's kind of overseeing kind of the parklets as well as these outdoor spaces on private property. So, um, in that, included in that is, uh, our mobility staff. And so if there were, uh, complaints or issues that arise, they would have kind of either landed, um, uh, on my desk or somebody from mobility, um, in terms of the parking issues.
And last question is, um, you know, we are coming out of the, uh, let's say the COVID disaster, for lack of a better word. Uh, and during this time, we've had this program that I think was very successful, both in the streets and on private property. Uh, that's to the city's credit, actually. Uh, but now as we enter a more, let's say, absent a recession, let's just take a recession off the table, we're entering in a, in a time where there will be actually more activity. And do you feel like we will start getting complaints as this is like, in a sense, free open space? So it's almost impossible not to take advantage of it. But if the situation starts really improving, uh, are we going to be heading into a collision between increased activity and increased demand for these open spaces?
Yeah, it's an interesting, um, comment because, um, even as we look at, um, the amount of permits that have been, uh, or even applications and permits, um, probably within the past year, that, that level has really kind of stopped at about ninety to the ninety-four that we have. It's almost like they've kind of plateaued off. So, um, even our existing permits, it's almost like our existing businesses are kind of satisfied, uh, with operating as they have. And, um, it, we really haven't seen kind of a, a significant increase in the, the application. So, um, I don't know if that also then just means, um, you know, uh, it's, it's almost like we've been almost clearly of a year of things kind of maybe steadily, uh, being about the same in terms of our, uh, spacing requirements, county requirements, uh, for restaurants and, and other uses. So perhaps maybe our existing businesses are satisfied. Um, I don't know if we might see an uptick, it very well could be, but, um, at least it kind of gives us an idea of where we're at and that perhaps maybe there won't be this big influx of, um, new permit, uh, applications based on this, on the new program.
Hey, thank you.
Commissioner Zolken, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Um, this may be overarching question and in terms of, Steve, thank you first for the presentation. I was not involved in the original emergency ordinance and I have a question. This mostly is about, except for parklets and the pier, this, this is involved in private property only. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct.
And so what happens to the, uh, people who have these outdoor patios, let's say, with barriers that are in the street unless they are suitable parklet, um, possibilities, they sunset. Is that true? They're out. At the, uh, at the end of this, the, the original, um, open space.
Oh, for, for the original.
The people that are in the street, are they?
So, so that program, um, as you guys, uh, are probably aware of, has kind of branched off and that, uh, actually is ahead of kind of this program. And so, uh, we did that, uh, based on design because that's where a lot of the demand was and that's where we knew that, uh, businesses really needed to get out there in terms of the parklet. So that is its own kind of separate program now. Um, and so this program is being separated from that, uh, basically because it's essentially, um, based on the private property versus the public space. Um, so the public space program will continue to move on and that is now in permanent status, um, for any new operators or even, um, you know, the ones that had parklets. And, and so they can now choose with this program, then also becoming permanent, um, then those that are eligible for both can kind of choose in different ways. Um, and then specifically those businesses that actually don't qualify for parklets because of the traffic speeds and there are, uh, Wilshire Boulevard is one, Santa Monica, Pico. There's a lot of, uh, areas that are out there that, um, they actually don't qualify for parklets. So this will, uh, benefit those businesses, uh, that are eligible for the other program.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Mr. Zolken, is that all, all the questions you got? Like it is, all right. I've got a few, uh, questions, uh, here. I'll try to be quick. Um, Ken Kutcher is in our virtual audience and I suspect he might be speaking to me, but, um, I'm curious if you have any thoughts as to his proposed amendment, uh, or, um, you know, permits that would, that would reach beyond the two-year, uh, time that he was talking about there?
Sure, that is the correction that was in the PowerPoint presentation slide. Um, and it basically, um, uh, allows for, uh, any approvals that were granted that are above two or the, the code allowed to, uh, two years or even two and a half, if you can. or the, the code allowed to uh, two years or even two and a half if they're in a coastal zone. So um, in, in, for example, if an entitlement was granted three years or four years, um, then the additional two years would be on top of what was granted by the hearing. Uh, so we're in agreement with that uh, clarification.
Got it. Yeah, sorry, I'd written my notes before uh, seeing your presentation. That was lost on me. Sorry about that. Um, for the eleven PM cutoff for alcohol uh, sales, is that uh, a local standard? Or is that tied to an ABC uh, rule or regulation?
So for the eleven PM closure, we um, sync that up with our alcohol exemption requirements and provisions. So the alcohol exemption uh, as you know, is um, established set of conditions that if they uh, operators comply with, then uh, they can obtain that permit. So the closure for that is also eleven PM. So we just wanted to be consistent with that.
Got it. But yeah, I mean, so just, just to make sure I'm understanding, it's all local and it's not directed by an ABC rule?
Uh, that is correct, yeah.
Um, am I correct in understanding that um, if there is a historic structure, you know, business operating out of a historic structure that wanted to uh, set up an outdoor base where they, that business? Uh, i- is it correct to say that there's not really any uh, review as to consistency between outdoor structure and the historic structure?
The structure, sure. So if a um, a landmark, for example, uh, was proposing some outdoor space and the structure that's proposed or kind of like the um, either the barriers or the enclosure. Um, yeah, so um, as we move forward, very similarly to um, even prior to the pandemic, um, our outdoor spaces were always subject to um, architectural design review. Just for the railings and kind of the materials and the quality. Um, very similarly, this program will also uh, be reviewed um, and very likely at the staff level to make sure that those go through quicker. Uh, similarly to landmarks um, approval, uh, that would be in the form of a certificate of appropriateness. Um, and um, and then of course, we would have some ability to make sure that um, anything in the attachments to kind of like a rear elevation of the facade was done in a manner consistent with the Secretary of Materials team. So um, that would be a part of that uh, staff level design review or anything on the outside.
Got it. And do you expect that that will be uh, something that's uh, you know, develop further in the administrative guidelines that are going to follow this?
I think you know, establish the um, the review procedures. Um, and I think that's um, how we always review CFA's and for compatibility. Um, we're always, you know, making sure that uh, like, for example, attachments of any structures um, can be reversed. And it's, it's not um, uh, it's resulting in uh, as few impacts as possible to resource. Um, so that's kind of in our scope of how we review CFA's anyway.
Got it. Okay. Um. I think that's all the questions I've got for now. Um. And uh, yeah, with that, uh, unless any of my colleagues have any further questions, I think it's time for us to move on to public comment. Alright, seeing no takers, uh, I'll announce again that the caller queue is open for this item. Uh, if there are no callers in the queue yet, staff will share the phone number again with a one-minute countdown timer uh, to give callers one last chance. And after the first five callers are heard, the queue will be closed to new callers. Uh, those already in the queue will still be heard. Callers after this point will be marked late and the commission um, can consider whether to uh, take those callers. So with that, do we have any uh, callers in the queue?
Yes, we do. Last four digits, one, four, six, three. You are now in the meeting and you will have three minutes for your comments. If you could please state your full name and then proceed.
Good evening, Commissioner. It's Paul Larmour with Harding Larmour, Kutcher and Cozal. I'm also the Chair of the Chambers Land Use Committee. I'm speaking tonight in support of allowing our local businesses to continue the existing outdoor dining on their private properties. Thank you to staff for clarifying a few important points tonight. Notably clarifying that for the existing businesses that have permits through the temporary program, they can keep the existing spaces at their existing sizes and locations so long as they comply with building and fire codes and they get their plans approved by the end of the year. As Commissioner Fundamentari pointed out, many of these spaces have been successfully operating for over two years where they are tested and tried and have become much-loved spaces in the community. Because these are under temporary permits and the interim zoning ordinance expires June thirty, um, moving forward this pathway for permanent approval should be a, a very top priority. I urge you to please move forward, um, move these changes forward to the council for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions uh, for the caller? Seeing none, let's uh, move on to our next caller.
Last four digits, five, two, zero, nine. You are now in the meeting and you will have three minutes. If you could please state your full name and then go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ken Kutcher from Harding Larmour, Kutcher and Cozal. Uh, following up on the letter that I submitted to the commission yesterday, I'd like to thank staff for um, taking a look at that concern and addressing it. I took a, you know, there are multiple ways to get a cat and um, I think staff's proposed solution works. I took a uh, snapshot of it and reread the language. And I think that the language they put up on the screen solves the concern. It's just important to make sure that um, for those permits for which an extended period of time was granted beyond, in this case, the coastal zone standard two and a half year. Criteria don't get um, uh, shortchanged on the extension because they face the same issues. Um, so I'm comfortable with um, staff's proposed language and hope that the commission will support that. Um, I could also follow up briefly on uh, Vice Chair uh, Ellis's uh, comment or question about landmark properties. And um, yeah, in this context, I echo um, the comments that uh, Mr. Misa Komi mentioned. Um, typically, these are landmark parcels as well as a uh, landmark structure that's designated. And in that case, a certificate of appropriateness should be required for any improvements on those properties. Um, and would be uh, either reviewed by the Landmarks Commission or in the event of uh, more minor changes by city staff. Um, happy to answer any questions, uh, but I appreciate again, staff's uh, uh, taking on and, and drafting language to address the concern I raised earlier.
Thanks, Mr. Kutcher. Do we have any uh, questions for the caller? Seeing none, uh, thank you. And let's move on to the next caller if there is one.
There are no other callers.
Great. Alright, so uh, this is back to us for discussion. Uh, Commissioner Landers, do you want to kick it off?
I would love to. Um, I would like to, I mean, I, first of all, I, I echo the, the, the praise for staff's thoroughness. And I really, um, I really do appreciate how um, how careful this, carefully this is done. Um, I would, there are really two changes that I'd like to make. Um, I'd like to provide pathway for requesting more than fifty percent of a parking lot or more than a thousand square feet. Um, perhaps through some sort of a variance or um, you know, other, uh, other means. Um, that is not, I just really want to stress, restaurants are struggling. This is not, I am not looking for a high-cost variance approach here, right? If, if I had my policy to others, this would be a free request. Because, you know, we've seen lots of restaurants leave Santa Monica. Um, we're trying to keep the ones that we have. Um, and so I'm, I'm really looking and, and, and we know that there are some, so many restaurants that are surviving only because they have outdoor, right? So all of that, I want to make sure that, that there is a variance approach. Um, and one in which, if the safest option is actually to take the whole lot or more than a thousand square feet, that that should be permissible, right? That we don't give a pocket veto um, on the grounds of safety uh, to a smaller, tighter kind of a setup. Um, that's, that's one, that's one suggestion. Um, and uh, and the, the second one really is that um, that there be some path, some very clear kind of uh, appeal pathway. I don't want us to start getting outdoor um, outdoor approval appeals like we get hedge appeals. Um, but I do think that there should be a means by which um, there is some additional level of review if the situation changes. I, the might, all of this is coming from an understanding that this has, this has certainly um, been three years, but they've been three very unusual years uh, where staff has gone above and beyond in letting folks get outdoors, operate outdoors. And when we move back into, you know, for lack of a better term, regular order, uh, co- kind of legal conflicts, like what I asked about with vesting and CUPs, start to pop up and may not immediately be appear to be resolvable. So I'd like to see a fairly easy pathway for people to say, okay, we've got a conflict here between ordinance and ordinance or regulation and regulation. Let's find a way to solve it in the most pro-business, pro-resident way possible. And I say that on both sides, because we want to preserve the businesses, but we also want to make sure particularly where we're abutting residential neighborhoods, that, you know, the conflict could arise with some noise issues. And I want to make sure that that's, that's really available. I think dealing with the fifty and a thousand, the fifty percent a thousand is one escape route. And I see the planning manager um, waiting to talk. So uh, how are you going to save us from hedge appeals?
Yeah, uh, a- appreciated. I think just first for context, you know, as staff is doing this program, our, you know, first, our guiding principle was first do no harm. Um, you know, we've been working alongside these businesses past three years to get them up and running um, in their day-to-day, you know, and understand pressures they're, they're under. So, you know, in terms of allowing, like, who's been operating, just some operators. It made a lot of sense, just if you had what you had, just continue it, you know, just go assist. Legalize your, your structure and what have you. Um, I think in terms of what, what you're uh, proposing for, yeah, let's start with the size, the thousand square feet. Um, I would encourage the commission to think about a number um, instead of leaving it open-ended, you know. Like, I think we show from the survey, the largest ones are seen. That's a great number. Um, you know, again, ge- given what's available on private property, it would be easier, you know, just to choose that as opposed to going through. I mean, I, I think as staff, you certainly would not advocate for a very uh, process or some discretionary process.
I'm sorry, can you, microphone is funny. What did you just say?
Yeah, sorry, Jane, we're, we're, we're losing a few words, uh.
Oh, okay. Is that better?
That is better. I'm a little, what do you think about the, what do you think about the issue with the fifty percent? Cause I'm actually.
Um, here's another, like, a thought on the fifty percent is that, it's so, i- if you look at um, the provision, sorry, I just need to find it. Just looking at it just now. Um. Okay, it's, it's an N, provision N.
Okay.
N as in, can't see, uh, number two. So you'll see, it says like alternatively, any further percent introduction. So that's like beyond fifty percent. Right now, we're referencing nine, two, eight, one, eight, oh, which is the reduction in parking um, section of the uh, zoning ordinance. What we could look at there, um, I don't think we have to draft this like precisely right now. But um, you know, that, that sort of, sort of this idea that like there's, you can, you can request that, you know, through um, the administrative process as long as it's um, you know, the, if, if, if compliance with um, you know, the circulation standards would create like more health and safety impacts or something like that. Or we can reference even existing findings. I think we have some thoughts around that. Um, just to provide kind of like a, a determined pathway, because again, you don't want, uh, I, I, I certainly don't want, you know, existing or future staff to be thinking, like, making up a process on the fly. You know, as people come in, the business owners should know, you know, under what circumstances, right? Um, you know, that, that they could uh, request, you know, certainly more space. And I, I, I hear what you're saying, because, you know, cutting a parking lot in half, right, that has consequences. You know, especially when you're trying to meet like drive-all widths and, you know, parking space orientation, all those things. You know, that, that, that all makes a lot of sense. Um, and uh, you know, throughout, I, I think the last three years has given us an opportunity to really experiment. People have, they actually did no review of site plans. People just put up whatever they did.
Right.
And we set some parameters around it. And so that's the approach here is, you know, the standards you see in the ordinance are things that are like important and non-negotiable, you know, if you will, right there. These are the key standards. And then that's why we have the admin regulations, because it allows us to be flexible and be much more nimble on response to those issues occur. We don't have to come back and change the code.
Oh, oh, right. So to respond to your point there, which I think is really well taken, looking at the, uh, looking at nine, twenty-eight, one, eighty, right, as a, as a, as a means for, as a sort of objective standards, the, the, the thing that's not there is where, to your point, it's actually safer to have more, you know, to simply take out the parking, right? For whatever reason. And I, if there's a way to draft that, I think um, obviously, I would, I, I would, I would like for them to have more, I, I would, particularly in the AB ninety, two, ninety, ninety-seven um, you know, area, I think where we have a permanent change of use and all of that, you know, that's still, that's still legislation and, and, and implementation that's in flux. Um, and other, you know, how, where, where that goes. And we could find ourselves, you know, I, I understand, that in the real world, as this plays out, we could find ourselves, you know, with very limited tools to require parking. But in the absence of that shift, that, that would be the piece that I would want is, is to really make, really allow people to go bigger, um, because it may just be safer to not, not have cars on a lot and have them moving. And, and it's not about, it's not just about the interaction with the, the outdoor space. It's also um, the, the, the interaction with the street that, that I'm worried about and pedestrians and things like that, so.
I think, I think the concept you're going for here is that, you know, if it's safer just to, you know, allow them up to that. And I, you know, I, I think we, we came about with this. It didn't come lightly, obviously. It was through a lot of empiric.
Right.
And seeing, because I, I think the thing that we were also wanting to, you know, really understand is that, you know, there are some streets where you can have a parklet and private space and sidewalk dining. Um, you know, so it, it, it's a lot of outdoor space that a business could potentially procure. And we were very aware of um, you know, we have, like, in dealing with the parklet program, you know, there have been concerns on merchant of like, you know, where's my street parking gone, right? Um, because.
Yeah.
Are there, you know, and so uh, we were kind of looking at, you know, these private lots of like, well, are they telling us by how much space you're taking up that, you know, they're acknowledging as a business owner, like, there is, is worth to done to also have parking spaces onsite, whether it's for employees, you know, quick pickup and drop-off customers coming in, you know, kind of in and out, like, there is. And, and, you know, we're, we're trying to kind of think through that holistically and allow businesses to make those decisions to understand that from, based on what we're seeing on the ground, that it seems like there is a desire, you know, to maintain some amount of parking, you know, on their property, like, for those just, you know, basic operational needs. Um, you know, given all of the other options that they have for outdoor spaces.
Sure, but that's an example where, that, I mean, that's a great example. You think about like, um, uh, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, right? But, but I'm just thinking about experiences that I've had in restaurants that have expanded in parking lot. Um, you, you think about a place like um, like Gilbert's, right, where they've taken up the whole side part. That's closed off, but you have a very clear alley. You have some parking. They've maintained some parking because, for that very reason of needing the pickup. Um, and that's working very well and it's actually encouraging, you know, it's encouraging residents to walk there to eat. And that's a very clear situation. Contrast that with um, for instance, uh, like behind solid. And that's a very clear situation. Contrast that with um, for instance, uh, like behind solid darity, right? You look at a restaurant like that, the next door neighbor has a parking lot where there's very clearly no solidarity parking allowed. They've pushed into their back lot and I could see a situation with a restaurant like that where they would say we, they would, they they've actually sized their back parking almost, I think, to zero. But they may have retained one or two employee parking only um spaces for the convenience that, you know, for the convenience that you've referenced, but they're absolutely do not want their customers parking in that alley, right? Moving in and out. They they've made that pretty clear. So that would be maybe more than a thousand square feet or more than fifty percent. But it would provide the restaurant with that flexibility to be able to say, okay, I want to keep four spaces for these employees or for loading and unloading when the restaurant's not in operation. But I don't I don't want to be pulled back to fifty percent, because then I I just don't want to have to deal with people backing in and out of an alley that they can't see or whatever it is. So if there's a health and if there's a way to say that in an objective way, I'd love to. Um, and with that, I think I'll stop.
All right, Commissioner Fresco.
Um, as somebody who's been in a restaurant where somebody in an SUV who didn't know how to turn around in the space smashed into the barrier and knocked over a table that luckily no one was sitting in, um, uh, that was in Santa Monica Canyon, though not in Santa Monica. But uh, what I'm thinking is maybe instead of this standard being fifty percent of the parking, that the standard be about safety and circulation and sharing with neighboring businesses and that fairness issue. And not just this uh quantitative approach that might not fit all situations. So that is my thought.
I'll add that I'm in agreement with that. Uh, Commissioner Fontanari?
This is actually a question for the uh planning uh director, assistant director. Um, and responding to Commissioner Wander's question, is there a mechanism that doesn't involve variances and thousands of dollars? And, you know, uh, would some exception be baked into our minor modification pri- uh, part of our code or, you know, something where there still is a hearing? Because here's what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing is that uh, the situation is very different when you have a number of tenants sharing the same parking lot. And there's going to be, you know, one tenant saying, well, I I want, you know, I want to take my fifty seventy percent and the other two tenants don't have a voice or they're not as favored by the landlord, you know, there's there's different ways. And then the other people who are not sitting at the table are the neighbors who may be adversely affected directly or indirectly. So you have to have some forum where this this discussion can happen and some equitable decision reached. So I don't know if the minor modification would be the appropriate tool for that, question mark. And again, I think it's very different if it's only one tenant that has the whole use of the parking lot. Then they can make the calculation as what's beneficial for them and just their neighbors as opposed to several tenants that have to share the parking lot. And then that's a different animal, because, you know, you don't want to advantage one at the expense of others.
Yeah, I I mean, certainly you could direct them to a modification process, but again, that does involve like a process and fees and really trying to take a much lighter touch, you know, with this program. Um, and, you know, like I said, patient rules are known, um, you know, upfront. Um, you know, I I would suggest then, you know, if, like from that perspective, what Commissioner Fresco, you know, just mentioned in terms of, you know, if if the commission is interested in like just not having a limit, you know, like just remove the fifty percent and the thousand square feet and just basically, you know, do like wha- whatever size, you know, makes sense, provided there are no health and safety concerns. You know, maybe a better avenue than establishing a standard and a modification process that, you know, requires a certain set of findings that I'm sure, what, I mean, I can tell you, we're not written contemplating a program like this in mind.
Well, I personally am very comfortable with a thousand square feet and fifty percent. Uh, and with appropriate safety, crossing the alley would be still acceptable with the appropriate traffic bumps or lights or whatever mobility decides. Uh, I think it's good to have some uh limits, which we can test and see if there are problems. Uh, and then if they do develop, then we can respond appropriately. But I like the idea that people, neighbors particularly, have some sort of certainty, some sort of benchmark as opposed to, ah, do whatever you want, whenever you want. I think that's always a little bit hazardous.
I I I mean, I I think we will point out like over, you know, the this program was very much self-regulating. The permits were just automatically issued as long as they, you know, attested to a self-certification checklist over that pandemic. Um, and they still ended up with about a thousand square feet. Um, you know, that that that's kind of like where it came from.
Sure.
Um, I can appreciate, you know, going forward, you know, there might be some different situations. So I, you know, I I think as a staff, we're not feeling strongly, you know, about the thousand square feet. It was just based on the data that we have. Um, and, you know, that that may be something the commission wants to discuss in terms of, you know, do you want a set limit or do you want to leave it more open ended? You know, seeing the results of a time when like there were almost no rules in place, maybe obviously they did establish like basic safety rules around traffic and circulation. They were required to put barriers around these, right? It wasn't just chairs and tables in this like free flowing parking lot. Um, you know, it wasn't like that at all, right? There were we still provided safety regulations around that. But um, you know, that might be, i- i- it sounds like I'm I'm hearing potentially two different proposals here. And, you know, from staff's perspective, I think as long as there are adherence, you know, health and safety and circulation standards, I mean, we're quite comfortable, you know, not having a limit. Um, and uh, you know, just kind of allowing the businesses to, you know, tell us, you know, what is it that you need? And then we'll just take a look at it.
Commissioner Tolkun, do you want to uh weigh in on on this uh subject? Like you're still muted there. Sorry.
I agree with Mario that we shouldn't, that a thousand sounds good. Um, I think this, we we this will come back to us, as I understand it, in a couple of years. But we'll have a lot of experience or it will come back before that. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
This, what we're authorizing this and asking the council to do will come back to us with some, we will learn from the it's this extension. Is that correct?
No, no, this is a recommendation for the permanent program. But this is not an interim ordinance. So the commission is making a recommendation to the council to basically convert what has been interim um for the past, you know, three years um into a permanent program.
I see. So this is.
Yeah, I mean, it would only return to the commission if, you know, the language is amended in the future.
Um, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Can I, can I go ahead?
Bishop, but do you have any anything further there?
I I wanted to propose a compromise.
Oh, go for it.
Okay, so I I would, I would probably lose the fifty percent rule, because I I think it's arbitrary. Um, but I am comfortable with the maximum. However, there's one situation where I'm not comfortable with the maximum, which is if the maximum does not leave sufficient room for safety clearance, right? What I was raising earlier, imagine you can go to a thousand feet on a eleven hundred foot lot or a twelve hundred foot lot, which makes very little sense. So I would like to see mobility kind of, and this and this has to be objective in some way. But there's got to be like a residual minimum size that um you can either make or you can't. And if you get to a thousand square feet and you only have like two hundred square feet left in the whole lot, they should just get the lot, right? If you have a three thousand square foot lot and you want to have the certainty that you can go to a thousand square feet, I would like to see it bigger, but okay, let's give this a shot. But if you have a, you know, eleven hundred, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred square foot lot, then just give them the lot. Don't, don't, don't overthink it. I don't know how you write that, though.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Well, I I'm inclined to agree.
You see the logic, right?
Let me, let me, yeah. Let me, let me suggest this. So uh, right now, the quantitative standards are in uh section nine point three one point one nine five N two.
Right.
Uh, what about just taking out out the quantitative standards and saying, you know, provided that they're, you know, to the satisfaction of, you know, whoever approves this for mobility, that there are no uh safety implications?
Right, but I don't want them to then refuse the whole thing on safety grounds, right? I'd rather, you know, if 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 you can't, if you if you can't do it, I mean, if you can't do it safely at all, you shouldn't be able to do it. But if if the if it's, if you can do it safely with the whole lot, but you can't do it safely with a thousand square feet, my position is give them the lot.
Let's let the chief deputy city attorney weigh in on this.
So, so it sounds like we're hearing two things and I did um just kind of want to confirm it. The first piece is you're kind of concerned about placing a limitation on the actual size. You are comfortable, and this is not necessarily uh everybody, um, but there are um, there is an idea where it would basically say as large as you can do it, so long as, so long as it means building and safety, fire and like, you know, mobility standards. Mobility actually does have, you know, a lot of objective standards that they adhere to when they're making determinations, right? So that's the first piece. And then the second piece is, however, if you are at the thousand square feet and we are trying to account for the circulation mobility standards and you don't actually get the thousand square feet or any usable space beyond the thousand square feet for a parking lot, you think it would be appropriate in that situation to allow for more than a thousand square feet and basically reduction of all the parking onsite in that case? Is that, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. Yes. No, that's exactly what I'm saying.
So that would be kind of two, two situations that you would be covering, rather than having the thousand square foot or the or the fifty percent limit in parking lots.
Um, there's one thing that you missed, though, which is the equity issue that staff brought up. Where there's a shared, and if there are other people who have dibs on that space, that equity sharing needs to be parsed.
Just a question back on that. Why are we solving for that? Because we're talking about private parking lots. So presumably, if if I'm in a situation where I am negotiating with the landlord, the landlord has a contemporary obligation to provide, I mean, parking has to be provided. You're not allowed to take away parking from somebody else that they are obligated to provide, right? I can't, I can't encroach on like medical parking to expand my restaurant and and harm the medical parking, right, that medical office's ability to deliver parking. So, but if the parking is available and freely available and I negotiate with the landlord and I'm willing to pay for that space, why is the city getting involved in that negotiation beyond the use?
Yeah, I'm inclined to agree with that and perhaps would ask our chief deputy city attorney to confirm my understanding that perhaps that's the uh venue of of uh private contracts for which this uh regulation might not extend.
That's, that sounds correct. I mean, it's not something that the city would be regulating, to your point. If if there are tenants, several multiple tenant spaces using um the same parking lot, that would be a private um, a a private matter amongst the tenants and the landlord.
Uh, Commissioner Fontanari?
Well, uh, I think on on paper, it's a private matter, but we're entering into a city with no parking standards. The core of our city will have no parking standards. So we don't know how this is all going to play out. We don't know how many businesses are going to say, well, we're getting all this competition for the two parking spaces on the street in front of our store. Now, we there, no one can find parking. People are driving around the blocks, parking in the neighborhoods. We're, we're basically creating an environment that we really aren't truly prepared for. So small steps, I think, are better in this case. And then when you throw in the ADA issues and the accessibility of people with limited mobility, then you're being, you're saying, well, if I can get rid of all of those things, then what about senior citizens? What about people who need cars for whatever reason? So the point I'm making is that we're entering in a brave new world and I don't think we need to rush into it. I think we should proceed in a rational but sort of conservative way.
Uh, Commissioner Tolkun, I saw you put your hand up too.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think mobility is the very most important thing on this and safety. There are parking lots on Montana, for instance, behind buildings. There are multiple tenants. A thousand feet may be too much. One restaurant has a thousand feet, it may break into the access to the other parking. So I think, you know, we have to have a working parking lot in that, in that case, with the other tenants. Those, so somebody has to, whether that's mobility or some uh other entity in the city has to look at these and 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 sign off on them. That's all I'm, you know. And I think to uh Commissioner Fresco's idea that mobility is the most important thing, thousand feet is fine if it works within the context of existing parking. If you own the whole, if you're a restaurant, it's all your parking lot, that may be fine. If you want to get rid of it. I, you know, I think restaurants are going to find out that they're going to need some parking, so.
Well, at least on this quantitative issue, I I think we've all uh, you know, made our points now. And I'll ask the planning manager if it would be helpful to dig a straw poll on any aspect of this or if you'd like any further direction on this point.
Well, can I, can I raise just a tangential item? Uh, and this is for Commissioner Fresco. Uh, you had indicated some concern about the solidity of walls around these open spaces. And would you be, and I think there is some place for solid walls in these open spaces. Would you be comfortable with a fifty percent standard? Where that forty two inch has to be at least fifty percent of the enclosure. There is an enclosure. Can't be less than fifty percent.
Well, the thing I was referring to is has to do with other outdoor dining adjacent to sidewalks that's not related to this. And that was removed by mistake, basically. So I was, when we solved this other problem, I was going to remind you all that we should have that language returned to its rightful place. Um, but in terms of these, uh, as you know, I am a hater of walls and fences and things that block open space. Uh, so I think that, you know, there are some references in here that uh to furnishings and limitations on furnishings and movability of furnishings and that barriers need to kind of fall in that category as not being really tall and opaque, you know, the forty two inches and then, you know, some people. Well, these are not in the street. These aren't parklets. And so I think forty two inches is actually adequate for these, in my personal opinion. I just don't see why we need more than that. These are open spaces. They're either parking lots, which need to look better, or they're open spaces that we probably required in some DR in the past. So we should make sure that these open spaces still have the effect of being open.
Okay, well, then let's go back to our regularly scheduled program.
Yeah, um, and it occurs to me that we're all going to have to figure out how to uh perhaps redline the resolution that we're going to be voting on uh with some specificity. Um, but at least with respect to the uh size standards, fifty percent space and Um, but at least with respect to the uh, size standards, fifty percent space and thousand foot, um. You know, I suppose we'll be voting on a resolution a little bit later, but uh, uh, can I just ask the planning manager whether you have perhaps an idea of where we might be heading with the final resolution or if we should uh, uh, be more specific with direction right now?
I mean, we have, this hearing actually is your, is your formal recommendation. So um, I think what we are hearing, and I don't want there to be, I think we should talk about two things. One is about the conversion of the existing spaces, like the percentage. I'm hearing for that one, um, that like, there's, I think generally maybe there's consensus around there not being a limit to the number of existing spaces, I think. Um, uh, you know, and that would be provision N one. Uh, or excuse me, N two. Um, you know, I'm N two, which currently talks about fifty percent, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we would suggest in that case that it might read like notwithstanding N one, which talks about you're not, not removing like ADA parking spaces.
Right.
Um, you know, which is always, you know, not the case. Um, there shall be no limit to the number of existing parking spaces that can be converted uh, pursuant to this section, provided that the outdoor space complies with building code, fire code, and objective transportation standards established by the city's mobility division.
And
Idea.
And to Commissioner Tolkun's point, preserves adequate access to non-removed spaces. Right? If you're, if you're talking about a largely self-service permit system, you want to make sure that people understand that they can't accidentally make it really hard for people to access those other parking spaces.
Well, that's part of, that's part of the transportation standards. That's all.
Oh, okay, great. Okay.
Can't, can't land lock a parking space.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Um, so.
And before, before we take the final, sorry, before we take the final vote on all this.
So we will, we will show you a resolution. Yeah, we're just not talking.
Perfect. Perfect. Thanks.
Um, because I think it sounds like we're still figuring things out. And then I think in L, I, I, I'm not sure. I'm, this thousand square feet, whether there is, you want to keep it or not, I'm, I'm not sure I'm hearing a real consensus around that. I think I heard two commissioners at least say they would like to keep it. So that's where I'm not really clear.
Maybe take a straw poll on whether to keep or uh, eliminate the thousand foot?
Yeah.
Want to do a straw poll? Okay. Um, this is around L and whether there should be a thousand square foot limit. Um, Commissioner Fonda Menardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
No.
Um, Commissioner Landris?
No.
Commissioner Tolkun?
Yes.
And Commissioner Reston?
Uh, no to the thousand foot limit.
Three noes?
Three noes.
Sorry, I'm on my calendar.
A thousand square feet is a very large object. It's twenty feet wide and fifty feet long.
Yeah.
Well, are we talking about the maximum here? The thousand?
But I think it's unworkable as an objective standard because imagine a thousand square feet unless the remaining space is deemed unusable pursuant to fire, you know, safety and other things.
Be honest, that's a very unique case. If there's only a hundred square feet left, you will make that landscape, you will have some other use for it. It's not like, uh, you know, they're going to try to wedge in a car for a hundred square feet.
But then you can't do it.
Well, no.
Force you to, force you to reduce it back to something that cars can use. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem maxing out at a thousand square feet if you could do something else with the remaining two hundred and thirty-seven square feet other than parking. But to my reading of this resolution, if you can't do a thousand, if the two thirty-seven is unusable, then the whole thing is negged until you're back down to a size where that space is usable. So you're now forcing the restaurant to a four hundred and sixty-three square foot um, outdoor space because of the way it's written, which is why I think the limit is unusable.
All right. Well, we've taken a straw poll on this. I think we should uh, move on to the uh, next topic. And I, I do want to circle back on the uh, red line that Commissioner Fresco caught earlier, uh, about um, the, I think it was the forty-two. I forget exactly where it is.
On page nineteen ninety-one.
Yeah, it's in the FAR exclusions. We, we do have uh, that's, that, that's actually a very easy fix. Yeah, it was just a inadvertent oversight there.
Anybody objects to that direction?
That applies. You need this to the areas that are outside of this outdoor program.
Correct. I think that, that's right.
Okay.
It's, you're undeleting, you're undeleting the strike through, right?
Right, and the forty-two inches would.
We're, we're actually reorganizing it a little.
Yeah.
So we can show it to you, but what happens is, is that there's two, the reason why it came in the first place, so this is why drafting is like always fun on the fly, but so there are, there are now two outdoor dining types, right? So there is the public outdoor, on public right-of-way, so that's governed by the two nine three one two oh oh. That's still subject to the forty-two inches. So that's why I'm saying it's a little bit reorganized. So that goes in front of the piece. And then at the end, where the language was added previously, it's only with reference to one nine nine because that's the private space.
Yep.
So that's, so it's not just, it's, it's a little bit of reorganization, but we have it. We'll show it to you.
But then that leads me to my second question is, do we want to make sure that these open spaces on private property in uh, also have the forty-two inch uh, barrier limit? So people don't start, you know, I mean, look at the parklets. Those things completely block views of our storefronts and our street walls from the street because they put up, you know, plants and all kinds of flags and fillers and they're solid, basically.
As someone who has eaten in a parklet, I'm really good with that because the last thing I need is car racing by where I'm eating and.
Right, but these aren't in the street. But these are not on the street. These are on private property, even within the sidewalk.
Okay.
I, I just want to. I do want to clarify that during the COVID era guidelines, we did not have a, a barrier limit, just given where these are located. They're often at the rear of businesses. They could even be, like, people were converting, you know, garbage rooms, like loading spaces. I mean, it was just, you know, everywhere they could find on private property, some of which is invisible from nowhere. Um, you know, it just didn't make a lot of sense. Park, parklets and sidewalk dining are a different animal. Um, you know, and in fact, a lot of the setups you saw are, you know, weren't actually in compliance, you know, with the guidelines. Parklets, but for private property, um, you know, I'm not, I, I would say like the staff, you know, we're, we're not recommending a barrier limit. I mean, just based on, again, the experience from the past few years. And it didn't seem like it really was affecting anything.
Well, if it's in the back and if it's in a loading space and, you know, but it's just, if it's actual open space that is part of the urban design of a building or a place that was part of, you know, our zoning code and our scheme. You know, we have requirements for setbacks and articulation and all of that. And uh, I feel that we need to be consistent with those rules with this forty-two inch barrier. I think it's great that those spaces get used, but if they're in uh, visible from the public right-of-way and uh, now suddenly somebody can put five or six feet, you know, fake green hedge there to protect their eaters, that just doesn't seem right to me. Now we, we've lost our pedestrian permeability. I mean,
I will say, I will say it's very unusual. Um, most of the buildings that, you know, most of the buildings was around the city. You know, they were not built like sort of future-proof here contemplating. The dining like on the sidewalk, you know, the sidewalk dining you see is on public right-of-way. Um, you know, unusual to see anything that is on private property. And, you know, those we've seen, I mean, they have a vested interest in like making sure that their business is visible too, you know, they're not going to like cover up the whole facade, you know, it's just, I, I just think in practice, it's not what we've actually seen roll out in these where, you know, without that rule.
I'll just weigh in briefly and say, you know, in, in my experience with these private outdoor spaces, you know, oftentimes it will be, you know, a um, you know, fiberglass cover or a mesh screen or something that will go above forty inches. And I'm worried that there's going to be a nightmare of interpretation, uh, if uh, there's a forty-two inch limit. But I, I'm curious if other commissioners feel strongly about this.
Well, uh, in a sense, we've had this program that was self-monitored, self, you know, with virtually no uh, constraints, in a sense. People just said, did what they wanted. Uh, and, and you and I know that there's many special cases where you want openness, obviously if you can, but there are places where you want to screen away from trash areas. You might want to screen noises to your neighbors, you know, where the, we're putting a fifteen-foot distance, a fifteen-foot for noise is nothing. It's not even an alley's width. So um, so my feeling is that that's an area, if we don't have an objective standard that we can hew to, then we should let it keep going until we start seeing the problems. And then we'll have to start adding pieces. But for now, it seems to have worked. It's, you know, it's, it's envious, but I don't think our complaint uh, collection system is perfect. Not too many people in Santa Monica know. First thing you do, you call three one one. That's not the first thing most people do. Most people start going through the phone book trying to look for code enforcement or some other thing. You see where I'm going with this. So it's an imperfect system. And uh, so let's not touch it. Let's just see if we can keep going with this kind of soft touch and see where we go.
Commissioner Landris or Tolkun, do you want to weigh on, weigh in on this?
I'm okay with the screening, to be honest. Um, I, I, I think we need to give flexibility. And I don't think there's a way to write this perfectly in the code, though I want to give the flexibility.
Commissioner Tolkun, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I, I agree with uh, Commissioner Landris. I don't think we can tie this down like that.
All right. Unfortunately, Commissioner Fresco, I find myself in agreement with uh, uh, the other uh, commissioners here. Uh, if, if you like, we, we could take a straw poll on this, otherwise.
It doesn't seem necessary.
Okay.
It's a little redundant at this point.
All right.
The cleanup level is helpful, though. I mean, it, do, do we want to, want to see it? Do we want to see it before we vote?
Well, before we get there, I mean, are there other, I, I have one other subject I want to at least uh, just, just raise, uh, but are there other uh, topics that uh, folks would like to opine on at this time? Dean Oztakers, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in and say that I, I think that the eleven PM cutoff for alcohol sales is, is not helpful for businesses. Um, I would like to, I know that's part of a broader regulatory framework locally, but um, I, I would like to see that, uh, you know, match up to whatever the local closing time is under each establishment's CUP is. Um, but I'm curious if anybody at all agrees with that? Yeah, Commissioner Landris?
Um, I do agree. I think eleven is too early. Um, but I'm wondering whether there's a way to tie it to um, the underlying zoning code or the noise ordinance, so that the eleven PM does not apply in a commercial district, right? Or, you know, it doesn't apply in a situation where there's a, a adjacent residential use, but it would apply where there is an adjacent resident. Um, I have lived next to places that go late and it can be unfun. You know, even that one time every two weeks, but if somebody's just carousing until all hours and you can't do anything about it, it's really frustrating. But they should be able to do that in downtown, you know, in, in the parts of the downtown where we encourage that. I would tie it objectively to, you know, one way to do it would be to tie it to the noise ordinance. Another way to do it would be to tie it to the adjacent use. So if you, if it is adjacent to a residential neighborhood, then you're stuck with your eleven PM. And if you are not adjacent, then um, warrant.
Well, any of the other commissioners want to uh, move this idea forward or are you all opposed to?
I think I'd be comfortable with that. We know it's sort of imperfect, uh, because obviously in a commercial district, right above that first floor of, you know, pounding restaurant music, there's, there's four levels of apartments or condos or whatever. So but it's hard to separate them. But let's start with a zoning separation. If you're not adjacent to a residential area, then you can go to whatever your, your uh, CUP alcohol permits. Otherwise, eleven, eleven PM is the, is the limit. I think that would be, again, a uh, a reasonable compromise, let's call it.
I would agree with that.
I could accept that.
Um, if I can just add perspective on outdoor patios, I would say that it's been the commission's practice for CUPs is to outdoor patios, um, the alcohol service. Okay, well, first of all, we don't have limitations on business hours. Like if you're not serving alcohol, you can be open twenty-four hours if you want. We don't really you know, how long a business is open. It's always tied to like the service of alcohol. Um, for outdoor patios, we typically, I think, I'm just being like, usually it's like an hour before, you know, the uh, alcohol service. Right? So if it's like two AM, you know, they need it to be done by, usually it's like midnight and then everything cleared by one or something. Has been the commission's past practice um, on that. So that's just uh, a thought.
So how would you, how would you express that in an objective way?
I mean, like there's, yeah, I think we're just thinking it through because for the rest, for, for restaurants that, mo-most of these are probably restaurants that opted in to an alcohol exemption permit already. So the eleven PM matches what's in the AE. There may be others that have older CUPs and maybe in those ones, very complicated. Um, you might roll it back an hour and then, but then, and then there's a third class that like have no CUPs at all that are just legal non-conforming.
And this is when, this is when the, the outdoor area has to be cleared out or when service has to stop? Like you're sitting at a restaurant having a long conversation, they have to kick you out or they have to stop serving you? What are we saying?
They stop serving.
They stop serving food or they stop serving alcohol?
Alcohol.
Okay.
Um, I just, while uh, everyone's brains are worrying, I'm beginning to feel like we're making a lot of tweaks in uh, Heidi's, Heidi's comment about writing laws on the.
In the, we do not, in between the commission's recommendation and the city council's hearing, we always fix those. So what we'll be showing you is definitely trying to capture the intent, but there may be some drafting cleanup that would be non-substantive that wouldn't change the intent of what, of what you approved. Um, so, you know, just some, just some perspective on, on, on the normal process, if that's helpful.
Yeah, yeah, I was just getting frightened, that's all.
Well, getting back to where we landed with the uh, closing time uh, issue, well, before maybe I get there, I'll let our uh, community development director weigh in.
Thank you, Vice Chair Raskin. Yeah, and just, um, you know, obviously it's the commission's um, recommendation to council, so um, do as you wish. I just want to make sure you understand that, you know, if we have late night activity and in the event that there is an issue, um, you know, and in the event that there is an issue, um, you know, code enforcement is not, is not here. Um, the only option would be, um, you know, the police department going out. This would tend to be a, a very low priority in terms of other things they have to deal with. So, uh, we just don't have a lot of, uh, resources to deal with things that might happen late at night. Um, and I think that's part of why we're recommending, um, maybe limited hours in terms of alcohol service and activity, um, as it gets later in the evening. So just something for you to keep in mind.
Yeah, good, good, good perspective. Um, and I'll, I'll mention that I, you know, I certainly take that to heart. Um, I think what, what I'm, I'm motivated by is, is trying to find a sweet spot between, uh, you know, realistic regulation and, uh, you know, making sure that businesses have an opportunity to, uh, to thrive, especially for those that really rely on late night clientele. Yeah, Commissioner Landers?
Just trying to get it there. Um, is there a way for us to, um, I mean, I, I still think, I still think that the adjacency to residential is probably the best solution, um, because it's easy and clearly understood. If you're looking for a time, if we have to have a single unified time, I'd probably go to midnight, um, you know, out of an abundance of caution. Um, because the vest, you know, because of people who are vested in it eleven P M, they gotta stop at eleven P M anyway, right? Um, and people who are vested at later hours, um, you know, we can always come back with a fix. I think another way for us to do this would be to find some compromise that works right now, vote on it and then give direction, uh, or in our sort of sending message to council, say, look, we made these fixes, we are still looking for a solution on this issue and we urge you to take A, B, and C into consideration. I think staff could very easily summarize our discussion when this moves to council and that would address the need to, cause I think agenda management at council right now is pretty tight. And so we, we're better getting this off our plate. But I wouldn't shy away from saying, we're struggling with this. We wanna maximize outdoor access in the neighborhoods that need it and we wanna protect residents in the neighborhoods that need it.
I mean, you know, I'm beginning to soften, to go back to the written word on this one now. As I think about, you know, all of this housing implementation we've done, where is there a zone where there's not people living right there? I mean, a restaurant that's open until, and serving alcohol until one in the morning inside doesn't have impact on the people upstairs the way the outdoor dining does. And so I'm switching back to the written word and, uh, that prohibition. Cause basically people live everywhere. That's kind of our goal, that then see.
Well, and the reality is that all of these businesses do have an indoor portion. There, this is just, it's not like they were taking away their alcohol just when the party's getting going. They have an indoor portion of this that they should have because they're not allowed to have just a standalone bar in, in, in the parking lot, if you will. You know, much as they would like to.
Great idea. You can do like a, a food, a drink truck.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like the air's coming out of the balloon of this idea, so maybe we should, uh.
And then we should go to eleven, let's just go to eleven and leave it at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, all right. Um, well, I think we're at the point now where unless anybody else has any other topics they wanna, uh, address, might be time to circle back to, uh, the red lines we had referenced earlier. Um, and I'll ask the planning manager if, if, um, you're ready to potentially share those or if perhaps we should take a three or four minute break to give you a little more time to work on those. Uh, what do you, what do you think is best?
I, I think we need a couple of minutes. Um, this is honestly, it's a lot of changes, so we're, we could just take like a five minute break.
I'll tell you what, um, if, like, uh, let's, let's do this, let's plan to be back at, uh, seven fifty-five. Uh, and then we'll check in to see where we are and if we need a little more time, we can, uh, we can go from there. Does that, does that work for you?
Let's just make it eight.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's come back, let's come back at eight o'clock then. Let's, uh.
Okay.
Okay. Take a little break, um, circle back.
See you soon.
All right, are we just waiting for, uh, Mario? Give him another edit to, if you want us here. Great, looks like we're all back. I'll ask our planning manager if, uh, we're good to go or if you'd like a little bit more time to keep working on things.
I don't know, I think we can run through this final language here.
Perfect.
So, it's, so it's just these, oh, whoops, yellow highlighted areas. Um, so the first one is the, uh, language about the forty-two inch barriers, so that's just restored. And you can see here, um, you know, putting, putting back the standard that was there. The oceanfront district, um, issue that was raised in public comment. So we just clarified that this did not exclude, um, existing commercial uses in the oceanfront districts. So that's been added there. Um, the, so now going to the program, the size, you can see we struck the thousand square feet. Outdoor spaces shall have no size limit for each eligible business, provided that the outdoor space complies with building code, fire code, and objective transportation established by the mobility division. Um, and then the conversion of the areas. Uh, you can see there N two, again, striking the length, the fifty percent standard. No limit to number of existing spaces converted, provided the outdoor space complies with building code, fire code, and objective transportation standards established by the city's mobility division. Moving into the permit expiration and extension, this just clarifies that the two years, you know, is from the, the actual issued, uh, expiration date. Um, cause there are instances where, you know, the commission granted more time, um, for permit expiration. So this just clarifies that piece. I think those are all the changes.
Great, uh, Commissioner Landers? Great. Uh, Commissioner Landers?
Yeah, I just thought of one. Um, and maybe we just can't deal with it, but, uh, to the extent that there are private parking lots, EV charging. Um, do we have, I, how do we, how do we make them move the EV chargers? Right? Like I could just see somebody saying, well, forget it. We just, we'll just move, deal with it. So if they remove it, they remove it. If they have the right to remove it, they have the right to remove it and I don't want the city getting, you know, but I, there may be people who are relying on EV charging that's come in over the last three years and maybe we want to ignore it, but I just don't want to flag it. I could just, I'm just imagining a charger being taken out of circulation. Which is a lease issue and a contractual issue, um, because frequently those are put in under agreements with, with those chargers companies. Though maybe it's something, as I'm saying it, that we don't need to deal with, but, um, I just want to name it.
Yeah, I'll, uh, let the planning manager weigh in on that if, uh, if there's any, any, uh, perspective on this that perhaps, uh, we're, I, I think it's a really good point and I, I, my, my thought is maybe there's a way to, um, you know, have that issue be, uh, addressed as one of the things that's within the scope of a mobility issue.
That would ideal, yeah.
I think that's just part of the transportation standards, you know.
All right. Well, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and make the motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-three dash zero zero one. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of Santa Monica recommending with the city council. Then the text of the zoning ordinance is to establish an outdoor space program allowing outdoor commercial activity on privately owned property. Uh, in consideration of other zoning changes related to emergency response and economic recovery, including the extension of certain timeframes with the, uh, edits that we just went through.
Second.
All right, Commissioner Fadbonardi, I think Mr. Landers out at first.
Yeah.
Any final discussion or are we ready to vote?
Commissioner Fadbonardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Landers?
Yes.
Eric Tolkin?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Raskin.
Yes. Great. Well, that closes out the item and I do want to give a, a last thanks to Carrie, Steve, Jane, Heidi, everyone who's on this. Fantastic presentation. We've all mentioned it before. It's all order to go through all of our comments on the fly. So really a sincere, uh, word of thanks to all of you for, for your job well done here. Um, all right. So we've got no resolutions, uh, no written communication, no, uh, planning commission discussion items. And that takes us to public input. So we'll announce that the, uh, caller queue is open for this item. Uh, if we could share the phone number and start the countdown. Chair, did we want to give people more than a minute? Yeah, maybe we should, um, aft- after the minute runs down, they'd be running for another thirty seconds or so.
We did not receive any calls in that time.
Great. Well, that takes us to the end of our agenda. Thank you, everyone. Uh, I might see you next week. But if not, then I'll see you, uh, on the fifteenth. Bye, everyone.